The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NVUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items? Mr. Michaels, are you there? Is there any public comment for closed session? Okay, we will wait to make sure.
You just said no, there's no public comment. It might be.
Okay, we're having technical difficulties, but the word is there's no public comment on closed session agenda items. Thank you so much. Seeing none, we will now adjourn to closed session. Okay. Good evening. My name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NVUSD.org/Board. Spanish interpretation is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Claudia Lindgren. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel, so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Si, buenas noches. Para acceder a la interpretación simultánea en español, en un momento aparecerá en la parte baja de la pantalla en Zoom el símbolo del globoterráqueo. Por favor, haga clic ahí y escoje español, y después done o listo. Si está usando una tableta o teléfono celular en Zoom, busque la palabra more o más, haga clic ahí, y bajo Language Interpretation o Interpretación de Idioma, elija español, y finalmente pulse en done o listo. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Martin?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. As we begin our meeting this evening, we would like to begin by sharing both our Napa Valley Unified School District's vision and mission statements. Our vision: Our graduates are confident, compassionate, and adaptable adults who are well-prepared for life and become inspiring advocates for themselves and their community. NVUSD's mission: Our mission is to prepare each student for a successful future by delivering rigorous and relevant learning experiences that develop their literacy and career-ready skills, cultivate their interests, and build resilience, compassion, and confidence. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Hart, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
I do. For item D2B, the board approved a settlement agreement with employee number 2995.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to E2, the flag salute. I'd like to invite our Valley Oak High School Students of the Month, who are here in the boardroom with us. Rodrigo Solana and Angel Reyes Alcarón have graciously offered to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Marcus, do you know how? There we go.
There we go. Test. All right, there we go.
Okay, ready?
Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Great job, guys. E3, Announcement. This meeting is live-streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at NVUSD.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda. Move to approve. Second. We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Do we ask for public comment on this?
I'm sorry.
I don't do public comment for approval of agenda, do I?
No.
Blank on that. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. E5, Approval of Minutes. E5A, the minutes for September 11th, 2025? Move to approve. Second. We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. All in favor? Aye. Oppose or abstain? I believe Trustee Jankowicz?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and that motion passes. And we have E5B, September 25th, 2025? Move to approve. Second. First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. All in favor? Aye. Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have visitors in attendance?
Yes, thank you, President Reiser. We do not have any tonight in the boardroom, but online we do. We have the President of NVA, Ms. Deb St. Clair, and we have the Chief Negotiator for NVA, Mr. Troy Giddings. Deb or Troy, if you'd like to address the board tonight, I'd ask that you raise your hand. Hey, there she is. If you could bring her over as a panelist.
Good evening, President Reiser, members of the board, Student Board Member Fish Leader, Dr. Masetti, and Executive Cabinet. I'm excited to listen to the NVUSD cast growth data this evening, so be waiting to hear all about it. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks for being here tonight.
Okay, wonderful. And that brings us to F, Recognition of Students of the Month. So here in the boardroom tonight, we have from Valley Oak High School. Can Assistant Principal Marcus please present the Students of the Month?
Thank you once again for having us. Dr. Masetti, Board, District Leadership, and obviously the Napa Valley Education Foundation. Thank you for once again recognizing our awesome students. I always bring this, you probably remember, but I just showed these two gentlemen their pictures from since they were in kindergarten. Both of these students are products of the Napa Valley Unified School District. First, I would like to recognize, or thank you for recognizing, I would like to bring to your attention Angel Reyes Alarcon. He has actually been with us just for one pentamaster, which is not actually a word, but we created it. He has a 3.71 GPA, K through 5, McPherson Elementary, Silverado, 6th through 8th grade, and then Napa High School, 9th through 10th grade, and just joined us this year for 11th grade at Valley Oak High School. He is a Level 4, which means that he is exemplary in almost perfect attendance, lack of tardies, awesome behavior, and high GPA. We do have a lot of information from some teachers here, so I'll make this quick. Equity-centered. Angel treats everyone with respect and actively includes peers in group activities. He's a member of the Golden Acorns, which is our ELAC group at Valley Oak High School. He's a member Acorn, showing commitment to creating a more inclusive and just school environment. Adaptive learner. He's a great student. When faced with challenging coursework and new material, Angel seeks out extra help. When needed, he uses feedback to improve and isn't afraid to try different learning strategies. He adapts to different learning environments and stays engaged even when circumstances change. Confident and affirming self-champion, Angel shows confidence in who he is by embracing his identity and expressing his opinions respectfully, even when they differ from others. He sets personal goals and takes pride in his growth without comparing himself to others. He supports and encourages others to create positive, inclusive environment, whether through classroom discussions, leadership roles, or daily interactions. He models self-respect and helps others feel seen and valued. Compassionate and relational humanitarian, Angel shows empathy and care for others, supporting classmates. He actively listens, builds positive relationships, and treats everyone with kindness and respect. He is a joy to have in class. Angel? Come on up.
All right. Good evening. My name is Angel Reyes, and I'm a junior at Valley Oak High School. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for this incredible recognition. I'd also like to thank my family for their constant support and encouragement. It truly means a lot to me. Before coming to Valley Oak, I attended Napa High School. Some of the challenges I faced there included struggling to get to school on time and staying consistent with my work. Since transferring to Valley Oak, I've noticed a big change in myself. The supportive environment here has motivated me to do better and stay focused. What really helped me overcome my challenges was learning to manage my time, going to bed earlier, staying organized, and keeping up with my assignments. Valley Oak has given me a second chance, and I am determined to make the most of it. To conclude, I'd like to give a special thanks to two amazing teachers, Ms. Marco and Ms. Vero Gomez. Thank you for your kindness, patience, being supportive, and for helping me with my work. You've made a huge difference in my journey. Thank you.
One, two, three. Try it one more this way. One, two, three. Thank you.
I know you can't really see them, but I'm going to show them to you anyways. They already took pictures of them. All right, again, the next student is Rodrigo Solana Barragon, who is also a product of the Napa Valley Unified School District. He has a 4.0 GPA. He came to Valley Oak in April of last school year, so he's been with us for a couple of pentamesters. He was at Snow, K through 5, Harvest, 6th and 7th grade, Silverado, 8th grade, Napa High, 9th and 10th grade, and he started at Valley Oak again on April 11th and is in his 11th-grade year. He is also a Level 4, which I already mentioned, he's an exemplary student in all levels. He is a compassionate, relational humanitarian, confident, affirming self-champion, adaptive learner. He is such a great student, asking questions, engaging in the work, and often bringing his peers along with him on the learning journey. The most important part right there, learning journey. His kindness and respect is contagious to his peers, making him a natural leader. Rodrigo, it's your turn.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodrigo Solana, and I'm a junior at Valley Oak High School. I'd like to thank the Board and the Napa Valley Education for this opportunity. Also, a thanks to my family for being my motivation in school. Before Valley Oak, I went to Napa High School, and my goal is to go back. One of the challenges I faced was having to get up early and go into school. What helped me overcome this was just knowing how to make a change and needing to. At Valley Oak, they have shown me I'm capable of doing many amazing things. I just wanted to give a thanks to Ms. Castillo and Ms. Julie for being amazing and supporting teachers. That concludes my speech. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations again to our Valley Oak Students of the Month. Now that brings us to the Napa Valley Independent Studies, September and October Students of the Month. And I think that we're doing those online.
Yes, my understanding is that Michael Freeman, who is again an exemplary student at Napa Valley Independent Studies, is not able to be here tonight. But before we go there, I got to give a shout-out to Ms. Castillo. Back to Valley Oak, I apologize. Ms. Castillo is a graduate of Valley Oak High School, 2012. She went to Napa Valley College, ended up going to UC Berkeley.
No way.
She stayed. Reiterate, go Bears. She ended up staying at UC Berkeley, got her master's as well, and just started this year as a teacher at Valley Oak High School, so.
That is incredible.
Kudos to Ms. Castillo. But back to the moment of the night. We are hopefully having, Michael Freeman will not be able to make it, but again, he's an exemplary student. The next student is Kaylee Tride, and I'm not sure if she's able to join us on Zoom? Okay. So again, our two Napa Valley Independent Studies Students of the Month are Michael Freeman and Kaylee Tride, and again, exemplary students. And again, thank you for your time, and again, recognizing all of our students.
Mr. Marcus, thank you so much for aligning tonight's recognition and celebration to the elements of the graduate portrait. That was fantastic. We have the certificates of recognition for the two students from NVIS, so you want to take those back?
I would love to. And Ms. Sernos apologizes, she is at another school-related event that she couldn't be here tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations again to all the Students of the Month. Okay, that brings us to G, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Hart, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you very much. And now I'll ask, Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment online for non-agenda items?
We do not have any online public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Before I open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items, I'd like to explain the rules that govern this area of the meeting. The Brown Act open meeting laws, under which we're required to operate prohibit board members from discussing items that you may bring up that are not on our current agenda. The reason for this legal restriction is to make sure that anyone who has an interest in a particular district business matter knows through the board's posted agenda when we will be discussing it as a board, so that they can also be present and provide input on the item. We're very happy to have people here to let us know your concerns. Please know that while we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we are listening to your voices, and we expect and know that our staff will follow up with us on issues raised by members of our community. Relevant to the remainder of the board agenda, please understand that the board listens and considers public comment on the agendized items during our meeting. However, public comment is not intended to be a two-way dialogue between the public and board members and/or staff, and therefore trustees will not respond to individual comments. This is in accordance with our meeting procedures. We invite members of the public to provide input via public comment per our Board Bylaw 9323 regarding meeting agenda items. We welcome and appreciate the public's engagement and input. In sum, please know that your voice matters and makes a difference. Your public comment on agendized items might be referenced during our discussions and will be considered as we make decisions regarding agendized items. Okay. So now I think I switch to here. And that brings us to H, Reports. H1, Board of Education and Student Board Representative, Student Board Member Fish Leader, would you like to start us off?
I'd be happy to, and congratulations again to the Students of the Month. My report is pretty short today. On September 30th, I know American Canyon hosted their Fall Spotlight performance. I was unable to attend, but I have a few friends on Mentis who participated, and they really enjoyed singing. On October 2nd, I, along with, I believe, Trustee Reiser and Trustee Jankowicz and Dr. Masetti, was at Vintage welcoming the President of the California School Boards Association, along with three other Vintage High School, or excuse me, two other Vintage High School students and one New Tech High School student, and they were great. I only got to meet the New Tech High School student, but other than that, it was great to welcome and kind of talk about what I do. On October 3rd, I attended Vintage's big game, and to say it was my last big game of high school is pretty sad, but Vintage won, so very happy with that. On October 6th, I was welcomed by Mike Thompson to join his team council, so I've now gotten to see kind of what happens at the school level, here at the district level, and now hopefully kind of at the political and government level. So I'm super, super excited to tell you guys what I learned. On October 9th, I was fortunate to speak of the head of the Horn Heart Foundation, a foundation here in Napa, so I'm interning there currently, where I'm helping to give scholarships to high school students and kind of help repurpose and grow high school sports, things I think that connect back to our graduate portrait, so I'm really thankful for that. And on October 16th, I wasn't able to attend, but I had so many people who went and told me about the College Stars Access Symposium. I spoke with Kelly Watkins today, actually, and she said to tell everybody here that she had a great time, and there was a lot there. So that concludes my report, but thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. That's great. Trustee Water?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. About Ms. Castillo at Valley Oak, I was meeting with her last month on the issue of, you know, student volunteers for, you know, student leadership, and I've reached the A. We kind of had this strange conversation. We were at Cross Purposes, not quite making sense. I mean, we're physically face-to-face, and then I realized that anybody 30 and under looks like a high school student to me now. I thought she was a high school student, because one of the students I was going to be dealing with, they have the same first name. Then, you know, we talked about her background, and yep, you know, she's an old blue, just like I am, and we had a good time talking about our college days before we got down to business. And on September 30th, I attended the Curriculum Committee meeting, and on October 7th, I attended the Napa County Office of Education meeting. October 8th, I attended the DLAC meeting. On October 9th, I trundled down to the, in the evening, I trundled down to the library to hear Shearer Schools Hannah Henry, you know, talk about teaching truth, teaching history. She had a very good audience. And on the 15th of October, I attended the Shearer Open House. Now, they're a magnet school with a career pathways theme, and normally, I'm one of these people, it's like, I really believe in letting children be children, you know, but this is not the sort of thing where you're shunted into a pathway. It's more like opening up a world of possibilities, and I thought it was funny that the little, that the little tags that had the different qualities that, you know, we checked into had facets on them, because we all have different facets of our personalities. And so I got schnuckered into taking the tests and came out with social, artistic, and enterprising, and they had a list of career choices after each of them. And like, like Trustee Martin, I've had a varied career path, and I looked at them, and again, I look askance at these surveys, and I went, boy, do they have me. They had every, they had so many things I'd done, including city council member. I mean, I was looking at it and saying, that's me, that's me, yep. And it was a wonderful night, lots, just dozens of parents and students running around, and the children were showing their parents what they'd done, you know, their projects, and it was all in the multipurpose room, and it was just lots of fun. I'm glad I went, and I got, the feedback I got was that you're all welcome to go too. They'd love for you to visit. And on October 20th, I went to the Napa Junction Elementary School. Well, we're very excited about what's going on with the literacy instruction there, and I'd just like to, I'm going to let Trustee Jankowicz talk about it, because she's more eloquent than I am, but I would like to thank Dr. Monica Reddy and Director Matt Manning, you know, for all the hard work they obviously put in down there. It was, again, I can't, anybody who's younger than I am, I have no idea how old they are, and I'm in a classroom with kindergarteners who are so well-behaved and mature and focused. I just assumed they were second graders. And the second graders, I thought, were, you know, fourth graders. I mean, it's just, the students were, you know, just happy, happy, they were on task, but they're still, they're still young people. They're able, I noticed that they just, they're having fun in school, they're working in groups, moving around, you know, nicely. They're able to regulate themselves, and I just, I had a great feeling visiting this school. It was, it was a very, very pleasant morning. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. Trustee Martin?
Thank you. On October 3rd, I attended my first big game, and that was a very powerful, I had a very strong emotional reaction to that. It was, it was really amazing. On October 11th, I attended a wonderful fiesta at Seha Vineyards with Dr. Masetti and the other board members. On October 20th, I'm so glad I attended the deep-dive learning session at Napa Junction Elementary School. There's a lot to be said about the amazing work that Mr. Manning, Dr. Reddy, Principal de la Motta, and the teachers are doing. They're combining phonics-intensive, linguistics-based letters training, the NVUSD instructional framework, and a content-rich curriculum to give elementary school students a first-rate foundation on which to build their intellectual life as they move through NVUSD. Teachers there have been given the training materials and support they need to implement research-based practices that are proven to actually teach children. After that, on the same day, I went and visited Principal Howard at American Canyon Middle School, which is where I found out you're not supposed to wear a hat on the dais. I was going to wear a hat, but I, he had an American Canyon Middle School hat that I coveted, and I, he offered it to me, and I took it. I shouldn't have taken it. I realized, I probably should have let him, because that was the last one that they had, but I, I probably should give it back to him. Anyway, this is his second month as principal, and I was really impressed with the way he's, like, he knows that school backwards and forwards. He hit the ground running, and he had a little time for me. So that was Napa Junction and ACMs were campuses number 22 and 23, so I have three more to visit for all 26 campuses. American Canyon High School, Napa Valley Language Academy, and Napa Valley Independent Studies, which hopefully will happen by the next board meeting. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. Trustee Jankowicz?
I would like to acknowledge World Teacher Day, which was October 5th, to celebrate the work of our teachers, and hand-in-hand with World Teacher Day is National Book Month, which promotes reading, writing, literature, and possibly Trustee Water. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's important, as many on this dais can attest to. I attended the CSBA Board of Directors meeting in Sacramento. It was a weekend packed with legislative updates, review of current legislative hurdles, and discussion on what should be considered going forward. We also discussed CSBA's new campaign launch for decisive state action to close the achievement gap. CSBA President Dr. Betty Lusk and CSBA Pacer Carrie Castro visited NVUSD to witness and experience our commitment to strategic, student-centered governance. I was very proud of NVUSD, and while I would love to highlight every detail of the day, I won't, but suffice it to say that professionalism, expertise, thoughtfulness, and student-centric approach of every person Dr. Lusk and Ms. Castro encountered was a genuine reflection of NVUSD. I met with genuine reflection of NVUSD. I met with the Honorable Joe Schunk, the historical understanding of the past and his keen interest in the present always makes for thoughtful discussions and conversation. I received a thank you from CSBA, but I really need to pass it on. So thank you to delegates Cindy Beederman from NCOE, Bridget Hunley from Fairfield-Sassoon, Mo de Nivya Marsh from San Rafael, and our very own Trustee Cindy Water for their willingness to be validators for the CSBA Golden Globe Awards. And a huge congratulations to Unidos Middle School Dual Language Immersion K-12 Pathway for being a recipient of this honor. I attended the NCOE Board Meeting specifically to be updated on the Maya Comas County Wide Charter's enrollment and their CBO's assessment of their fiscal stability. I had a meeting with Vichy Middle, with a Vichy Middle School representative regarding the K-8 program. There's a high level of commitment and engagement from the current middle school parents. I participated in a CSBA Zoom call, which focused on legislative updates, and Chris Reeve, political consultant, provided the history and current context of ADA versus enrollment funding. I participated in the webinar and inside look at Mahmoud Policy Update packets, but we at NVUSD reviewed this litigation and its policy impact during our Quarterly Policy Committee meeting. I participated in the Business Affiliate webinar, Adopting with Purpose and Communicating with Confidence: Financial Strategy for California Changing Education Landscape. And what I found really reassuring is that in a time of shifting enrollment patterns and kind of changing funding formulas, we have already leveraged our financial data and information to navigate all the real-world concerns that the webinar addressed. So thank you to the Business Office. Participated in the Close the Achievement Gap, analyzing California's 2025 state test results and launching CSBA's campaign for the state action on achievement, which I will discuss later when we talk about the CASP. I met with Carrie Castro. I listened to Mike Thompson's live town hall. The discussion was ongoing government shutdown. I listened to see if there would be any impact on LEAs. Most items, most of us, most of our items are forward-funded, so education wasn't a predominant piece of the discussion, but healthcare was. I attended, as Trustee Martin said, Mary Hernandez's Celebration of Education and the relationships she has cultivated over the decades that serve public education. I attended the School Connected Organizations Zoom Call. Jenna did an excellent job of reviewing the manual and giving clarification when needed. And I, too, want to take a moment to thank Dr. Reddy and Executive Director Manning for the experience at Napa Junction. And it was, it was really inspiring. Dr. Masetti organized the opportunity to visit the campus, and I had the opportunity to participate in one of the most insightful instructional deep dives I've experienced as a trustee. Trustee Water and Trustee Martin have addressed this, so I'll try to keep my already very long remarks brief. But I left the visit deeply impressed by the level of intentionality and coherence across the classrooms. And we reviewed the priority standards. We examined how they are implemented across grades K and 3. That's the grade levels that we saw. The, I mean, for me, the alignment between standards, instruction, and student learning was exceptional. Teachers demonstrated a clear understanding of the standards and then how to integrate it into every aspect of the classroom practice. Across all the classrooms, instruction was, it was consistent. It was engaging. It was responsive to student needs. I observed a rich variety of learning experiences, all occurring simultaneously: small group instruction with the teacher, independent reading, targeted phonics, vocabulary development, sentence structuring, handwriting lessons, then digital literacy through Chromeback activities, which were going on while everything else was going on. And everybody was individually engaged or group-engaged. There was no chatter. Everybody was focused. It was, at least for me, one of the most amazing things that I've seen. Like I said, the students were engaged. Teachers maintained a remarkable command of both classroom dynamics and individual learning. But what stood out most was the continuity and how important the system alignment was. For all of you that do this every day, it always, it makes sense. You guys are educators. For somebody like myself that came from a different sector, I listen to what happens at the podium. I understand it in its individual silo. To see it put into practice, to have it make sense, to see that we are doing everything we say and then some, it was just, it was very impactful for me. There was the clarity of learning targets to the consistent use of all the kind of scoring rubrics that were new to me, that both students and parents could understand. As a trustee, it was profoundly meaningful to witness the curriculum and instructional strategies that we support at the governance level come to life in the classroom. And seeing how educators weave together so many learning components to meet the needs of every child reinforces the importance of our collective work in supporting instructional coherence and student success. It was so impressive, and I thank every single person that sits to my right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Hart?
My list is a lot shorter. Starting back on the 3rd of October, I was happy to attend the Napa High and Vintage Big Game with my family and was, enjoyed the evening, got to see several other trustees and their families out there, so it was, it was a good, fun night. On the 8th, my daughter and I took part in the Walk and Roll to School, along with one of our dogs. We took a little stroll over to Unidos Middle School, and that was a lot of fun. Lots of kids walking in and riding bikes that day. Also, on the 8th, I tuned into one of Mike Thompson's town hall meetings. Also, as mentioned by Trustee Jankowicz, mostly spoke about healthcare. The Executive Director for Cover California was the speaker. On the 20th, I participated in the Special Education Community Advisory Committee meeting, which I'll report on in a moment here. On the 21st, I took the day and went down to American Canyon. My first stop was at American Canyon Middle School. I got to meet the new principal, Brian Howard, and he was great, as mentioned previously. He's very excited and we're very experienced. It sounds like we were lucky to have him join us in that capacity. I also got to visit the Math 1 class of Tammy Lee, who was, who was one of their teachers there, which was really cool. Got to see some of the students' projects. Got to take a look at their coding and CHID, which was really cool. And they were able to explain how, how that works and the relationship to the math skills that they were learning that way. So it was really neat. After that, I went over to Donaldson Way, which is like 12 feet, and met with their principal, James Dennis. Got to see some of the new construction going on out there, which is very cool. The new multi-use room, looks like it's almost ready to roll. And the TK classrooms being built are beautiful and large and are going to be a great addition to that campus, I'm sure. Also got to go check out American Canyon High School, which I've not been on that campus very much, so it was really neat to go and take a look at it. Principal Karen Hatton and one of their new APs, Lauren Leahy, joined, joined me, and we got to kind of talk about the history of the school and some of their goals and strengths and things that they're working on. And just got to kind of walk around and experience it from an outside perspective. It's beautiful. It's very much more reminiscent of a college campus than, than a high school campus. So one of, one of the shining stars of our district, for sure. Got to check out the culinary classroom, which was really cool. Has all kinds of setup. It was just freshly cleaned, and so it was, it was really neat to get to go in there and talk to the teacher. She was off period, so I got to have a conversation. And also the sports medicine classroom, which was really neat and unique. The kids had laid down on paper and traced their bodies and then drawn in all of their bones and all the parts of their bodies and named them all out. So that was kind of a cool thing to see. And then also, we went through a classroom and got to talk to some of the, some newcomers. And the teacher had them ask us questions in English, and we answered them, and we had a brief little conversation, which was kind of a cool thing. So that was nice, kind of a neat thing to see and interact with them as well. So that concludes my report.
Wonderful. Trustee Chu?
Well, thank you all for coming down to American Canyon. I know that it's kind of a trek, but I think the community appreciates it anytime that our trustees go there, aside from just me. So I realize it's been a month since our last meeting, so there's been a lot of things that I've kind of done in the community, aside from my regular board responsibilities. I went to the Napa Vintage Big Game. That's always fun. I brought my son, and he said, wow, I've never been to a high school game that had so many people attend. So he was very impressed with, and he wants that at American Canyon. I said, well, it might be a while, because we don't have schools that close to us. On October 10th, I, I went to Manila Munchies, which was put on by three very engaged mothers of our district. And it's in celebration of Filipino Heritage Month. And I do want to thank NCOE trustee Cindy Beederman for bringing NCOE Associate Superintendent Julie McClure down to promote Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, where kids up to age 5 can get one free book each month. So that would apply to all of our NVUSD-TK students and any little siblings. On October 17th, I attended the ACHS Football Game versus Petaluma. It was senior night for football cheer and band. And I actually got invited to walk on the field to support a senior, which is awesome. And I will say that they do a great job in celebrating their seniors. So many people on the field. I think I got lost a couple times, but met a lot of people I hadn't seen for a while, so it was a great experience for me. On October 19th, I actually went to view the Wall That Heals, which is a traveling replica of the Vietnam War Memorial. And it was in American Canyon, the last stop in California before it moved on to Texas. And I do want to thank the ACHS students who helped with disassembling and sending off the wall. And lastly, October is a very busy month for Stars and college readiness, apparently, because I was listing all the events that I attended as part of Stars Network with my son. And there are four of them. October 1st, I was here at the District Auditorium to listen to the University of Chicago Common App Seminar. On October 7th, I attended a virtual college fair, where all 32 Stars Network colleges were online. And I was in a chat group with some parents, and I think probably between all of us, we attended all 32. So it was, it was really wonderful to be able to have that connection for our families with a better understanding of what it means to think about college at that level. On October 13th, my son attended an in-person counseling session at ACHS with one of the Stars counselors that was there for the, here for the week. And then everything culminated on October 16th at the Stars Network College Access Symposium. Thank you, Kelly Watkins, for putting on a wonderful symposium. I have all the great feedback from parents and students, and they just wish that they could have attended more sessions. And I did hear from Kelly that next year, I think it's going, the next stop is at ACHS. Hopefully, that the symposium will be there. So really great experience with Stars Network as I help my senior navigate this college application process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. We have been busy, my goodness. So going all the way back to the day after our last board meeting, on September 26th, I was very happy and proud to attend the event that we had here at the District Office, celebrating our guaranteed admission agreement with the CSU East Bay. We welcomed President of CSU East Bay Kathy Sandin, and President Sandin and Dr. Masetti both addressed. We had students from our district, from, from our district, as well as students from CSU East Bay, talking about their experience attending there and the, what it means to have the guaranteed admission and the sort of recognition of their hard work and commitment to higher learning that that can, can give to students. So we're, we're just so excited about that partnership moving forward. On October 2nd, I was part of the host committee that went around with our CSBA President, Dr. Betty Lusk. We've spoken a lot about that. It was so amazing to have the student voice, Student Board Member Fish Leader, and his peers from Vintage and New Tech High, just gave a really great presentation about the, their involvement at the high school level, at secondary experience, and in particular, the Stars College Network was certainly an impressive thing to share with Dr. Lusk. We were able to highlight the Ag and Culinary Pathway, CTE pathways as well during our, the portion of the visit that was at Vintage High. So thank you to Principal Hutchinson and all the students and staff that, that contributed to that. We had a tour of the central kitchen, so thank you to our, our Food Services Director, Kristen Teckel, for that really amazing experience for President Lusk. And we dined on, or lunched, I guess I should say, on amazing delicious food that our students also enjoy. The hype about the tuna fish sandwiches from Trustee Jankowicz was real and very well deserved, and we all enjoyed the entire experience of that. And then we made our way down to Napa Junction. I'm looking forward to the deep dive visit that the other half of our board will be making in a few weeks. But we did do sort of a mini deep dive there into the letters training and the high-impact instructional strategies being implemented there in kindergarten and third grade, or first grade and third grade. And then we saw an intervention class, where the kindergarten teachers were being utilized in the afternoon to leverage their time and expertise for intervention. So it was really, all in all, an amazing experience, a real pride-filled experience to showcase these certain elements of our program and our organization, you know, to the President of the CSBA. And I, we've heard from Trustee Jankowicz, and it was very clear in the moment during that day that we were together, that she was very impressed with the collaboration and the student-centered focus and the focus on achievement and all of our Hallmark programs that we have. So that was a really great, a great and fun experience and fun day. On October 3rd, I attended, along with Trustee Chu, the American Canyon Two by Two Meeting, which we shall report on later. And as well as later on that night, the big game. It's always a fun and exciting festive atmosphere. Not only was the football exciting to watch, but the halftime show, the spirit leaders, the dance teams, the marching bands, just put on an amazing show. And it just feels really like iconic high school experience to be at Big Game. On October 21st, I joined a virtual meeting to prepare for a panel presentation that we're going to be doing at our upcoming Annual Education Conference for CSBA. So I'll be looking forward to participating in that way in the conference again. And then yesterday, had my regular Board President Superintendent prep meeting in advance of this board meeting. And that concludes my report. So moving on to the Special Education Community Advisory Committee meeting, that was H2A. Do we have a report on that? Trustee Hart?
We do, indeed. So we met on Monday, and it was actually a very well-attended meeting. We had a very thorough presentation from a local attorney on the subject of limited conservatorship and supported decision-making. She reviewed the different types of conservatorship and what each covers. For example, there can be conservatorship of a person or of an estate. She also discussed the entire process, which includes which powers can be requested and how the court procedures work. So it's, it's very intimidating, but she, she made it very understandable and took it piece by piece. She also reviewed various alternatives to conservatorship, such as advanced healthcare directives, power of attorney, release of information and supported decision-making, all of which provide options that families and loved ones can use to help support a person with developmental disabilities. So that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. That brings us to H2B, the City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives. Trustee Chu?
Yeah, so we met on October 3rd. Trustee Reiser was also there. We had not met since April, so we had quite a bit of discussion items. We talked about the remnant parcels that the district owns in the city and what we might consider doing with those. No firm plans, of course. We discussed enrollment trends with a focus on American Canyon schools. We discussed the Measure A2 project updates, and of course, mostly recently, the improvements at ACMS with the track. And I can report that my son has been using that as part of PE, and he says, so much nicer. We discussed college and career readiness initiatives, including Stars Network, guaranteed admissions to Sonoma State, and Cal State East Bay. And I want to end by congratulating American Canyon on being awarded the 2025 Best in Governance Award for Education, Arts, and Culture. And they're very gracious in saying that they share this award with the district, because it does take a collaboration across the board for all of our students in American Canyon, because nearly all of them attend in ES. because nearly all of them attend NESF schools. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And then I think City of Napa Liaison Representatives?
We have not met, but we do have a meeting on the schedule for November.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And now H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Hey, thank you, President Reiser. So I'm going to do some live editing here because so much has been stated by the trustees. So I'll make mine more brief. We're definitely in the same places, so that's a good thing. So good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. I'm pleased to share several exciting updates this evening that reflect the tremendous progress and positive momentum across our district. Again, several of the trustees, or Trustee Reiser and Trustee Jankowicz, talked about Dr. Betty Lusk's visit, the CSBA president, and Carrie Castro, the CSBA Pacer. And we did really highlight, I think, our future-ready programming, like has been mentioned by both attending board members, the Stars College Network, and all our other college and career readiness initiatives. Like Trustee Reiser said, the new CTE facility at Vintage High School, where we will be housing our culinary and agricultural pathways. Unidos Middle School, the early literacy initiatives at Napa Junction, and yes, of course, our school nutrition program, otherwise known as NOSH. And I just really want to say that as the superintendent that day, I was just, it was such a proud day for NVUSD. I want to thank all of our staff who helped make the visit such a success across the schools, the departments. And I do want to thank our Chief Communications Officer, Julie Bordes, who helped me design the day to make sure that it was a true showcase of the great work that's happening in our school district. I was so excited that President Lusk was, went back, and it felt like she really thought that we were a statewide model for a lot of the programming that we're doing here. So it was really an honor to host her and Ms. Castro. Again, the Golden Bell Award was mentioned as well. And I think we talked about the fact that we were amidst the validation at the last board meeting, but we did receive formal notification from CSBA. So that felt really good that we have officially been selected for the 2025 Golden Bell Award for our Spanish Dual Immersion TK-12 pathway with a special recognition for our innovative middle school programming at Unidos Middle School. I just want to add that this honor recognizes years of courageous decision-making and excellence in implementation. We took a risk when we established this innovative Spanish language academy, you know, to strengthen our TK through 12 Dual Immersion pathway. And the results are speaking for themselves. You know, three, four years later, we're really proud of that. So from the middle school consolidation that strengthened our program to the exceptional work of our teams at NVLE and Pueblo Vista at the elementary level, and then, of course, the continuity that exists at Napa High School, where the program continues at the high school level, we're just so grateful for this recognition and award. We will formally receive the award at the CSBA Annual Education Conference. The board will be present. The executive team will be present. And we're also excited to have Dr. Alejandra Uribe, former principal of Unidos, now our new director of multilingual services and parent engagement. She'll be there with us. And then we will celebrate locally at our January board meeting so that the staff in the pathway feel recognized for all of their amazing work. I also would like to update the board and the community about the fact that we just implemented our first round of system-wide data dialogues. This is a practice that we started last year. And as you'll see, when Dr. Abud presents our CAS results, we do believe that this was one of the main, or not the only, or the primary, but one of the several strategies and influences in getting our system to really queue up to standards-based instruction. That is what is tested on the state accountability measures, the state standards. And these data dialogues provide us as a team, the Instructional Services Team, an opportunity to me, myself, as a superintendent, to engage with principals and really think about how they're going to continue to move their schools towards ensuring guaranteed and viable curriculum by focusing on standards. So we recently completed that first round this year. And it allows the teams to analyze student performance, identify trends at their schools, and plan targeted actions for improvement based on the results from last year. The effort really is a cornerstone of Strategy 3 in our strategic plan, building a culture of data use. And the process, I think, has fostered reflection, accountability, and collective ownership across our system of student success. Thank you to our principals, because they have to work really hard. You saw some of the evidence of that work at Napa Junction, where we recently did the board deep dive. But I also just need to thank Dr. Monica Reddy, Dr. Peter Abud, and Executive Director Matt Manning for facilitating the process, starting last year and really starting the school year, hitting the ground running with this focus. The following week, we also, the senior team and myself, Chief, our Chief Communications Officer, Julie Bordes, and Dr. Peter Abud, who serves as the project manager for our strategic plan. We spent a couple days also meeting and holding milestone meetings with all of the strategic plan strategy leads. We do three rounds of this to monitor progress on the implementation of our 24-29 strategic plan. This was the first round for this school year. These sessions provide a clear look at progress, challenges, and opportunities across all 15 strategies. It really provides us an opportunity as a team to get a 360 on what's going on, a 360-degree view of what's going on in our organization. The coherence and alignment across the department continues to strengthen, ensuring that our strategic plan is not just a roadmap, but an active tool guiding our daily improvement work. Spaghetti with Dr. Masetti continues. I have now hosted 10 lunches. We have 16 more to go between now and December. So we're plugging away. These informal gatherings just really continue to be energizing and meaningful. You learn so much going into the faculty lounges at the school and just eating with our teaching staff. But I just want to note that we have our custodians coming in, we have office staff, support staff coming in to join us for the lunches. It's just been a tremendous opportunity for me to connect directly with our school site staff. I'm hearing about all the strengths in our system. I'm hearing about opportunities and challenges that we have, that we continue to have. And it's just great to hear them firsthand. It's also really an opportunity to celebrate the incredible work that staff is implementing at all of our schools. They're really grateful that we're just feeding them and recognizing them with a meal. And I have just been blown away at the attendance. So the faculty lounges, all the cycles of lunch, you know, elementary often has two or three rounds of lunch. I have not sat alone for any segment of this. Teachers and staff have been coming in, and it's been fantastic. The last two in the last week or so that I attended were Pueblo Vista and Sheer. And I just, you know, I want to thank the teachers at both of those schools and the staff at both of those schools, the principals. Our principals do a great job of holding the fort so that the teachers and the staff can come in and have the meal with the superintendent. So, you know, I want to thank all of our principals. But I know Ms. Montgomery was really busy, and Ms. Roca were really busy tending to the school while the staff was in having spaghetti with Dr. Masetti. So thank you for everyone's support in the system of creating space for this to happen. Looking ahead, I am also really proud that the Napa Valley Unified School District will serve as the host district for the upcoming California Collaborative on District Reform convening on October 29th and 30th. The California Collaborative on District Reform is a statewide organization that does case studies on school districts around improvement efforts. And they select school districts to host convenings so that the school district serves essentially as a case study and a model for potential improvement. The theme for our host convening is Data for Improvement: Cultivating a Culture of Reflection and Collaboration in Napa Valley, which aligns perfectly with our strategic focus on continuous improvement and data-informed decision-making. We are expecting next week approximately 40 educational leaders, including superintendents and their teams, union leaders, researchers, policymakers from across the state. We even have a member of the California State Board of Education that will be in attendance. They'll be engaging with us in this important learning experience as NVUSD provides a case study for district improvement efforts. We have a panel with, including teachers, we have a panel with some of our principals. And we also, on the second day, have three of our trustees that will be sitting on a panel, explaining how data has served them in the governance role in order to ensure that we have the conditions for improving student achievement in the district. So we're excited to have our district team, our union leaders, the principals, teachers, the board members participate. As we spend two days telling the story of how NVUSD continues to use data to improve our students' educational outcomes here in the district. And what's fantastic is that essentially, a research paper and case study will be written about, will be published and written about the two days here and what is learned in the collaborative. So really excited about that, and I look forward to sharing that post the session. And then lastly, given the widespread and evolving news of federal agents arriving in and around San Francisco, we have been hearing concerns today from parents about student safety and access to our campuses. I just want to reassure our community that NVUSD remains wholly committed to ensuring our students are safe, learning, and engaged on campus despite immigration status. Thank you. That concludes my report. And now I will toss to the Assistant Superintendents. And we'll start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Representative Fish Leader, and Dr. Masetti. As part of NVUSD's Strategy 6, our Human Resources Team is working to better connect professional learning with our evaluation systems. Under the leadership of Director Kate Gogger, we are transitioning to a new digital platform to complete and store evaluations for all employees. This platform is more user-friendly and will allow us to easily review trend data, eventually helping us to align professional learning with documented, data-supported needs. The change also gives us the chance to refine our forms, directions, and supporting documents to ensure clarity and consistency across the district. Last week, certified evaluators, primarily principals and assistant principals, joined a work session to review these tools, discuss what's working, and identify areas for improvement. As the process evolves, we are committed to improving calibration so evaluations consistently identify both strengths and growth areas. This enhanced evaluation process is foundational to other professional development systems. For example, each year, we welcome dozens of new teachers at the start of their careers, and they benefit from solid mentorship from experienced practitioners. We also support mid- and late-career teachers who may need additional guidance. Our Peer Assistance Review Program, launched after last year's pilot, provides coaching and targeted professional development for these educators. Both of these programs depend on detailed, accurate, and well-calibrated evaluation feedback to pinpoint areas for improvement and track progress. NVUSD's Human Resources Team is working closely with the Instructional Services Division to ensure that evaluations go beyond compliance, serving as a strategic tool to align performance assessments with clear expectations for high-quality instruction. This collaboration is designed to create consistency in teaching standards across the district and to use evaluation data to drive targeted professional learning, ultimately supporting excellence in classroom practice. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. And next, we have Dr. Monica Reddy, our Assistant Superintendent, who oversees the Instructional Support Services Division.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, Student Board Member Fish Leader, and NVUSD community. October marks the District-wide Professional Development Day. On October 10th, each school site and department designed and hosted learning experiences tailored to their strategic goals and student needs. Several schools partnered with one another to deepen collaboration and share best practices across sites. Throughout the day, the focus remained on using student data, implementing research-based instructional practices, and building collective efficacy within and across teams. Staff learning was intentionally designed to connect directly to outcomes and student achievement, engagement, and belonging. Across classrooms, offices, and departments, staff demonstrated the qualities outlined in our adult portrait. It was especially powerful to see so many practitioners leading their colleagues, reflecting the deep leadership capacity of our principals and department leaders and what they have cultivated with their teams. The Professional Learning Day also served as a launch to training and support on the new intervention platform, iXL Math. Over the past two weeks, teacher training continued for iXL Math across nearly all NVUSD schools. Many teachers are already integrating the platform into intervention periods and small group instruction. This adaptive tool helps students strengthen math skills through personalized practice and real-time feedback. This month, NVUSD continued to expand opportunities that help students plan and prepare for their future pathways. Throughout October, our avid and multilingual learner students in eighth and ninth grade are taking the PSAT 8-9. This assessment provides an early benchmark for college readiness, helping students to identify the knowledge and skills they need to strengthen as they begin their high school journey. The PSAT 8-9 also connects students to personalized tools, such as AP Potential, which recommends advanced placement courses aligned with their strengths, and customized college and career exploration platform to help them set goals and chart their academic plans. This is important as they transition from middle to high school. On October 16th, as was shared by many of you, NVUSD hosted its first-ever Stars College Access Symposium at Napa High School. The event was a tremendous success, drawing over 400 families who connected with representatives from universities, including the University of Chicago, Caltech, Vanderbilt, Auburn, NYU, UC Berkeley, UC Irvine, UC Davis, Napa Valley College, and our partners with 10,000 Degrees. The evening featured workshops on college admissions, financial aid, and the many pathways to higher education, highlighting our district's commitment to making college and career planning accessible to all families. Thank you to our college and career readiness team, school counselors, and our partners in the Stars College Network for bringing this inspiring event to our students and families. For students to be college and career ready, we need to take a system-wide approach through the multi-tiered system of supports. The Prevention and Intervention Team continues to strengthen MTSS along with our site leaders and staff. This week, they hosted the second session with the MTSS pilot teams. They jumped into EduClima, our new data platform supporting the redesign of NVUSD's MTSS. It marks our first pilot training involving 10 schools that will help shape the system-wide rollout. EduClima will enable us to integrate academic, behavioral, and attendance data in one place, supporting data-driven decisions that improve outcomes for all students. And lastly, partnership and collaboration with families continues to be a key part of student success. Our parent advisories are important touchpoints throughout the year. On October 6th, our Special Education Parent Advisory Group met this month to learn about the department's goals for students with individual education plans and the implementation of the new Centegix Badge Safety System. Parents learned about department goals for the year, including implementing evidence-based literacy instruction for grades PK through 12, using data from behavior and incident reports to strengthen positive behavior supports, and increasing time in the general education classroom for students with IAPs. These goals directly support our district-wide focus on welcoming and inclusive schools, ensuring every student has equitable access to high-quality instruction and a sense of belonging across all our campuses. Thank you to the Special Education Team for supporting and partnering with our families to meet these goals. On October 8th, Director Dr. Uribe, in partnership with the D-LAC officers, hosted our first D-LAC meeting of the year, which was attended by more than 50 participants, including both parents and NVUSD staff. This strong turnout reflects the continued dedication of our community to supporting English learners and engaging in meaningful dialogue around academic programs and district initiatives. During the meeting, we shared updates on the Stars program, information about the College Access Symposium, and a detailed overview of Measure B progress, including Phase 1 and 2 facilities improvements. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Reddy. So much going on in Instructional Services. Great work. All right, next, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala, who oversees the Business and Operational Services Division.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Today's report will focus on state revenues and the impact of declining enrollment. The Department of Finance released its October 2025 Finance Bulletin today, and revenues continue to exceed the projections of the 25-26 enacted budget. While this is good news for schools, it comes with many caveats. Revenues for the state budget in California schools are primarily driven by taxes on high-income earners and the stock market. The stock market continues to do exceptionally well. As long as the party continues, state revenues will continue to be strong. When the stock market drops, revenues to the state and school districts also drop. The state has addressed this variability in revenues by continuing to give schools one-time funds instead of increased ongoing funding. Even though the revenue outlook is currently strong, the impacts of declining enrollment offsets much of the increase in state revenues. Declining enrollment has definitely picked up in the Napa Valley Unified School District. Our enrollment is currently 89 students below our projection. While we don't know all of the reasons for the sudden increase in declining enrollment, immigration enforcement, and changes in inter-district transfer policies with a neighboring district may be the primary cause. These collective changes will likely negatively impact our enrollment, especially in American Canyon. For example, enrollment in Canyon Oaks is anticipated to decline from approximately 700 students to 650 students by next year. We recently received a draft of the enrollment report. This draft is the basis for our final enrollment report that we'll bring to the board in the spring, which will also inform our staffing decisions. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mangwala. And we both forgot to mention in our reports, I just, I do want to share this. Mr. Mangwala and I, yesterday, we were in Sacramento. We were invited by the California Policy Collaborative, which is the nonprofit that trains the legislative support staff of various senators on education to inform senators or... around their policy and decision-making related to educational issues. And they hold a monthly collaborative learning session for the legislative staffers of the senators. They've done one on curriculum this year. Last month, it was on governance, and this month, it was on school finance. And at every one of these sessions, the California Policy Collaborative invites a district to showcase in order to provide context and learning to the legislative staff. So we were, I was contacted by the California Policy Collaborative as a district that successfully financially stabilized. And so we had the opportunity yesterday to go share our story and did Q and A as the legislative staff, you know, increases their knowledge and capacity around issues related to school finance and education. After we left, they had to actually engage in a, in a game where they had to enact 2% and/or 5% budget cuts and kind of go through criteria of decision-making and what you would do. So our story kind of launched the experience for them. So it was exciting to be able to create that learning experience for California Senator, Senators Legislative Support Staff. So we were grateful to be able to do that.
Thank you for that addition. Yeah, that's an amazing contribution you're making to our statewide legislature, and thank you for doing that. Okay, that brings us to H4 Facilities and Bond Program update.
So I must say, doing fun things with facilities is a lot more fun than talking about money. So you definitely get to see the difference immediately. So very excited about some of the items we have here tonight. And so just kind of continue our past practice on focusing on the things that we've done since our last board meeting and some of the important agenda items that we have before us tonight. And so what you'll see on tonight's agenda, which is, it's very exciting. What you don't see in the slides is the timeline. And so I do want to talk about how far we are ahead this year compared to last year. So even though, again, we went really early last year, we're still, right now, we're three months earlier than we were last year. So last year, we awarded the least-leaseback contractors in January, and here we are in October awarding them tonight. So super excited about that. And so what you'll see tonight is you'll see a contract for Napa High and Vintage. So that's a grouping of one of the contractors for HVAC, exterior paint, and a fire alarm system. So back in June of 2026, PBK was selected as the architect. We've been working, meeting weekly to work on the design for the high schools. Tonight will be the contract for Wright Contracting. So they're a long-term district contractor. They will be the least-leaseback contractor. And as a reminder, it's the initial award of the contract. What they do is they go out and they bid the services, and then we get guaranteed maximum pricing before we start. So it's, we have one more step, then we know the number, and then we start breaking ground. And so they'll actually start doing their evaluation right now. They literally go out to the site, they'll take roof samples, they'll look at other things, just, just really doing a lot of collection. So they have all the data that they need to get the work done in those 43 days. Next slide, please. Also on the agenda, we have Stonebridge, Redwood Middle School, and Valley Oak. That's the other grouping that we're grouping these schools into. The architect is H-Kit, and the award for the contractor is Art Builders. They are the contracting firm that did all the work in American Canyon. And so again, longtime district contractor, same, same kind of pattern, where staff will return to the Board for approval, then guaranteed maximum pricing. That happens after all the subcontractors have bid out the work. Next slide. District-wide Solar continues to move forward. As a part of that work, we're required to hire someone for an inspector of record. And so that's what you will see on tonight's contract, so that work is still going. Right now, we're primarily waiting for DSA to approve, with the first breaking of the ground likely happening in November for Vishi. So Vishi's been approved. There, it's an easier design, so it's a ground-level installation instead of a carport. That was what was, what was, we were able to choose there. And so that likely breaking, breaking ground in mid-November. Next slide. And that's it. Questions?
Questions or comments from trustees? Thank you for that update, Mr. Mangwala. Okay, this brings us to I, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the Board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a Board member.
I will move to approve. Second.
The first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on the consent agenda online?
There is no public comment on consent agenda items.
Thank you very much. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote for consent agenda?
Yes. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That brings us now to J, Presentations and Discussion Items. J1, Business Services. J1A, The Spring 2025 CASP Data Presentation.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, President Reiser, Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Member, Fish Leader. This evening, I am excited to share with you a summary of our CASP results from last spring. And tonight, I'll be sharing English, math, and science data with you for schools within NVUSD, as well as those across the county. And we're very excited about the successes and growth across the district. Next slide, please. Thank you. This work falls under Strategy 3 of the Strategic Plan: Building a Comprehensive Assessment Framework and Culture of Student Data Use. Next slide. And before we get started, just a little context on CASP. CASP stands for the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. Next slide. And students are tested every year in English Language Arts and Math in grades 3 through 8 and 11, and they're tested in Science with the CAST or the California Science Test in grades 5, 8, and once in high school. And over the last few years, high school testing has occurred in 12th grade. Based on their results, students earn a performance level, one of four performance levels: standard not met, standard nearly met, standard met, or standard exceeded. And students who score in one of the top two levels, standard met or standard exceeded, are considered meeting grade-level standards. Next slide. First, I'll share the results and the growth data at the state level. And you can see that the state increased last year in English and math by just under 2%, and in science, the state increased by 2%. Now let's look at the NVUSD growth data. Thank you. And our goal has been and will continue to be to have steady and consistent growth for our students. And you'll see tonight that we were able to accomplish that this year, which is very exciting. And we'll continue to strive for more growth in our, in future years. Next slide. Thank you. The slide shows the change between last year and the prior year in the percentage of students scoring at standard met or exceeded in all three subject areas. And you can see that NVUSD demonstrated growth for English, math, and science. Next slide. Specifically, we had a 4% increase in English Language Arts and nearly a 2% increase in both math and science. Next slide. And this slide compares the growth in NVUSD to that of the state. So NVUSD, again, grew four percentage points in English, which is over twice the improvement seen at the state level. And for math, we were just slightly above the state's growth, and for science, just slightly below. Next slide. And this positive trend is consistent when we look at growth at individual schools across the district. The majority of schools showed improvement. Seventeen schools demonstrated growth in English, 13 schools in math, and 15 schools in science. Next slide. And here we have some elementary highlights to share when it comes to growth. Vishi and Napa Junction showed the highest growth in English with 10, uh, Napa Junction, Vishi and Napa Junction showed the highest growth in English with 10% and 8% growth respectively. Northwood showed 6% growth in math, and both Vishi and Phillips showed 4% growth. And in science, Donaldson Way grew 10%, while NVE and Shear both grew 5%. Next slide. At the middle school level, all of our middle schools showed growth in English Language Arts, the most notable of which was Unidos, which grew over 10%. And additionally, all of the NVUSD middle schools demonstrated growth in math. Next slide. At the high school level, we see several highlights as well. Napa High demonstrated tremendous growth in English and math, growing 11% and 7% respectively. Independent Studies and Napa High showed notable growth in science at 9% and 6%. And American Canyon High School showed growth in all three content areas, growing 4% in ELA, or English, 6% in math, and 19% in science. And Independent Studies demonstrated a 6% growth in math. Next slide. So in a moment, I'll shift to comparing schools in our district to schools in other districts within the county. And before I do that, I want to remind everyone of a couple of data points that add context to the scores. First, a district's, a district or a school's unduplicated count. Students are considered unduplicated if they're English learners eligible for free and reduced-price meals or are temporarily unhoused. And we use the term "unduplicated" because students are counted only once, even if they qualify under more than one of these categories. And students who are unduplicated have a history of performing at a lower rate than our non-unduplicated students. And we see this across the state. It's not just at NVUSD. And these students typically need more support and resources, and that's why the state actually provides additional funding for districts that have higher unduplicated counts. Next slide. Next, I want to illuminate the funding levels at the different districts in the county. And as a reminder, districts are entitled to a certain amount of funding based on their enrollment and the percentage of unduplicated students. This funding comes from local property taxes, and the state provides any additional funded funding needed to meet that entitlement. And districts whose local property taxes exceed that entitlement get to keep that additional funding and are considered community-funded, and receive more funding per student than districts who are not community-funded or simply LCFF districts for the local control funding formula. The slide lists the districts in the county. Their status is community-funded or LCFF, and the funding they receive is per student. And you can see that the funding in Napa is lower than the other districts within the county, which I don't believe is a surprise. Let's go to the next slide. So there are five districts in Napa County. All of them, except for Napa Valley Unified, are considered community-funded, and as a result, their funding per student exceeds that of NVUSD's. Districts like Pope Valley and St. Helena Unified receive nearly two and a half times as much funding as NVUSD per student. Next slide. So with all that context, let's start with looking at the elementary scores across the county. Next slide. As we look at the data, you're going to see a few things here. The majority of the higher-performing elementary schools in English, Math, and Science are schools from NVUSD, despite the disparities in per-pupil funding levels. And also, you'll see that Vishi Elementary outperformed St. Helena Elementary in English and math, despite having a higher unduplicated percentage, and St. Helena's extremely high levels of funding. Next slide. So here's the elementary English data. I know it's hard to read, but really just pay attention to the colors here. Each bar represents an elementary school and the percentage of students at standard met or exceeded. And there's also that school's unduplicated rate. But you'll see that most of the bars towards the left are blue, which represent NVUSD schools. And again, that top-performing elementary school is Vishi, which scored higher than St. Helena Elementary, which is a very small and highly-funded school. The UPP is the unduplicated. Yes, correct. So the higher that percentage, typically, the lower the performance. That's the trend that we normally see. Okay? Let's go to the next slide. And here it is for math. Again, lots of blue towards the left of the chart, and you can see that Vishi outperformed St. Helena Elementary by a significant percentage, by seven percentage points there. Let's go to the next slide. And here it is for science. For this test, it was actually St. Helena Elementary, which outperformed the others in the county. But again, lots of blue towards the left of that chart. Next slide. And now we'll switch to the middle schools. As we look at this data, you'll notice the following. Unidos and ACMS outperformed Robert Louis Stevenson, or RLS Intermediate, which is the middle school in St. Helena Unified. And they outperformed them in English Language Arts, despite their higher unduplicated count and, again, St. Helena's levels of funding. Unidos' science scores surpassed those of RLS Intermediate, and Maya Comas County-Wide Charter School had the lowest English Language Arts and Science scores out of the middle schools in the county. Let's go to the next slide. Thank you. These are the middle school ELA results. Again, two of our middle schools outperformed RLS at St. Helena, again, despite funding and unduplicated counts. Let's go to the next slide. And here it is for math. In this case, RLS did outperform the NVUSD middle schools. And next slide. And here's the science data. Unidos outperformed RLS here, and Maya Comas had the lowest scores in the county, with less than 7% of students scoring at standard met or exceeded. And let's switch to the high school. Thank you. When we look at the high school, next slide. When we look at the high school data, you're going to see that ACHS, the largest high school in the, in the county by enrollment, is very competitive with St. Helena High School. ACHS outperformed St. Helena High School in math, despite a higher unduplicated percentage and despite St. Helena's funding levels. And also, you'll see that ACHS is less than three percentage points away from St. Helena High School in English. We also wanted to highlight here that Napa High, one of the high schools in the county with the highest unduplicated counts, showed significant growth in all three content areas from the prior year to this year. Excellent. Thank you. Here's the ELA high school data. St. Helena is at the top, but again, ACHS is very close behind, with about three percentage points there. And you'll notice the UPP for ACHS is 60%, and that of St. Helena is on, is 38.7. So big differences there. Let's go to the next slide. And the math data, where we see ACHS outperforming all of the high schools here, including St. Helena High School. Again, big discrepancies in the UPP, but very similar performance levels. And next slide. And here's the science data, and here we did see that St. Helena had the highest scores here out of the county. And next slide. And while we believe that everyone in the organization plays a role in student achievement, I want to recognize that this growth would not have happened without the work of the Instructional Services Division. And so I'd like to invite up Dr. Monica Reddy to speak some, to some of the work that has been done, which led to these results.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. Before I start, while the 2425 school year reflects one year of measurable growth, it represents a culmination of years of development. NVUSD's progress is built upon sustained efforts in fiscal stabilization, human resource development, and collaborative union relationships, all centering our students and our families. These, these efforts were complemented by a focused initiative to decrease chronic absenteeism over the years and the establishment of social, emotional, and behavioral programs that support the whole child so that they can learn. Together, these systems create the stability and coherence necessary to focus deeply on teaching and learning. When considering the results of 2425, there are four areas of focus that contributed to the progress and performance of our students. Improved access to grade-level learning, advanced assessment literacy and alignment, continued prioritization and strengthening of early literacy. First, we developed and implemented system-wide data practices, which you've heard a little bit about this evening. Beginning in January of 2025, the introduction of data dialogues marked a significant shift in how our district and site leaders use evidence to drive improvement. With support from the Amazing Data and Assessment Team, each principal received CASP goals in English Language Arts and Mathematics. These goals established consistent, measurable expectations across all schools. Our system-wide goal was to maintain the percentage of students scoring at or above standard in ELA and math, and move one-third of our students scoring nearly met, to met or above standard. The STAR assessment served as the district's primary progress monitoring tool, enabling schools to track growth throughout the year and adjust instruction accordingly. The NVUSD data dialogue process engaged principals and district leaders in structured conversations focused on analyzing data, setting targets, and aligning resources, budget, staffing, and professional learning to achieve incremental growth. The model built leadership capacity for sustained and actionable improvement tied directly to data and assessment. To deepen instructional coherence, NVUSD launched an instructional leadership team focused on building the knowledge and capacity of site leaders to lead rigorous grade-level instruction. We cannot do this work without our principals. Each month, principals and leaders engaged in targeted professional learning on the components of guaranteed and viable curriculum, developing a common language and shared understanding of what students must know and be able to do. Our approach intentionally strengthened and empowered the role of the principal as an instructional leader, equipping them to guide their teacher teams and implementing standards-based instruction with clarity and precision. This work is supported by collaborative efforts between teachers and district staff to define priority standards, which are essential skills to define priority standards, which are essential skills and knowledge, proficiency scales, which tell us the degree to which students achieve those, students achieve those, and common assessments across elementary, middle, and high school ELA and math. These resources enable our professional learning communities to ensure instruction is aligned to grade-level standards, pacing is consistent across classrooms, and assessment practices are equitable. When students do not meet proficiency, teams are equipped to respond with reteaching and intervention. Additionally, site teams have integrated data conversations into their PLC process, focusing on students identified through the data dialogue process. This three-tiered structure, system, school site, and PLC ensures alignment and continuity in data analysis and progress monitoring throughout the district. Assessment literacy and understanding of rigor deepen our NVUSD schools in multiple ways. Many school teams took practice assessments themselves, reflecting on the complexity of CASP items and discussing the instructional implications for their teaching. This firsthand experience helped teachers calibrate expectations and align classroom assessments to the level of rigor required for success. Notably, at the elementary level, schools continued implementation of the district writing assessment. Now in its second year. This assessment provides teachers with calibrated examples of grade-level writing and consistent measures of progress in literacy across the district. Middle school demonstrated notable growth, which speaks to our organizational focus on strengthening middle schools. It is a hallmark of NVUSD to put this much focus on our middle schools. One intentional practice at the middle school level is the implementation of CASP-aligned assessments throughout the year, ensuring that students regularly encountered standard-aligned tasks and question types. Their consistent use of formative and interim assessments contributed to measurable gains in student performance. Across schools, teams developed test preparation plans tailored to their students' needs, ranging from integrating practice tasks into instruction to organizing school-wide review sessions. Importantly, many schools empower their students to review their own data and set goals, cultivating student agency and ownership of their learning. This focus on reflection and goal-setting strengthens students' confidence and preparedness, supporting both their academic growth and the development of future-ready skills. And last but certainly not least, NVUSD continues to prioritize early literacy as a cornerstone of long-term student success. The district is on their fourth Cohort of Letters: Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, a professional learning program grounded in the science of reading. To date, over 140 teachers have completed Letters training, with an additional 119 teachers currently enrolled in Cohort 3, 3, and 4. All elementary principals are trained in Letters for Leaders. For 2526, NVUSD sustained momentum through ongoing coaching of cohorts, professional learning huddles, and learning from early cohorts to inform the district's plan for scaling Letters. This work is supported by dedicated coaching, is grounded in agreed-upon best practices, and is built upon a sustainable model of support and partnership with our principals. Together, these efforts reinforce NVUSD's commitment to ensuring every student becomes a confident, capable reader and writer by their early grades, laying the foundation for academic success through all content areas throughout their educational journey. As I close, we are really grateful to all of our NVUSD staff who contributed to our school's success and our students' success. That includes our cafeteria support, who's feeding our students, our maintenance and grounds that ensures that our students have safe places to learn, our instructional aides who support our students in the classroom, our campus safety specialists who make sure it's safe. These scores often are credited to instruction, but we can't go to work without all of the organizational components that make this happen. So I just want to make sure that we thank them for their contributions every day that may go unnoticed. We are already engaged in reflection, data analysis, and refinement of our actions, and we are looking forward to keeping the momentum in 2526.
Sure. Questions, comments, discussion from the board? Trustee Chu?
So I'm just so impressed that the instructional team and all of the support staff have been able to get us to this point. Because although we may, you know, make decisions at the board level, the actual implementation happens on the ground. And so I just want to appreciate everyone for all their hard work to getting us here. And I am really looking forward to seeing, you know, that slow and steady growth that we are aiming for, because we're going to get there. Thank you.
Other comments? Trustee Water?
Well, I think this shows that money isn't everything. Okay? And I think I had a reporter call me up, and I said, perhaps unwisely, I haven't read the story yet, that I just naturally have an underdog mentality, and it makes me a little bit more optimistic and competitive. And I think this is great. I'm really, I'm just proud of all the teachers, all our students, you all in this room who helped make it possible. This is wonderful. Also want to know, what's up at American Canyon High School with the science going up? And isn't that the test that they take in 12th grade when the students are supposed to be, like, totally checked out? So I really would love to hear what the motivation, motivational talks that might have happened. I do know a teacher in a middle school who just knocked herself out encouraging her students. I mean, she didn't threaten or browbeat them, but it was just constantly, "You can do this, you can do this, you can do this." And throughout the year, pointing out to them that, you know, "This is something that shows up in a test once in a while." And I just think that that kind of retailing can have, can have a strong effect. I'm, again, I'm yay for Unidos and American Canyon Middle School, and yay for Napa High School that has the highest growth and, in spite of being the school with, really, it's our, it's our most high-poverty high school. And, and those, I taught there for years. There's plenty of talent there. You just have to look for it. We just need to nurture it. But it isn't just that. It's approaching, it's approaching education in a systematic way. And I believe that the emphasis on literacy is, it sounds very common sense, doesn't it? But it took us, took us a while to get here. A lot of things got in our way, most notably, most notably COVID. But I really feel we're on our way. I'm feeling good. So thank you so much.
Trustee Jenkowitz?
You know, I can't do anything off the cuff, so read some prepared comments. Smile. Congratulations. And yes, you thanked everyone, and everyone deserves recognition. But I do want to thank you for all that you do and all the hard work coming out of instruction. This growth is not accidental. A 4% increase in ELA and 2% in math is significant, and each percentage point represents real students. I did, I was telling Dr. Booth, I did a little reading over the weekend, and it was kind of curious to me that in education, in education data, 1% to 2% gain is often considered statistically and educationally significant, 1% to 2%. So especially when based on consistent practices. So growth at scale is hard, and it reflects a lot of sustained effort. Think about it this way, sustained growth over multiple-year compounds. So what matters most for us is that this trending continues, and it will. But I also want to emphasize that while we celebrate the success, and we do, this is because of a lot of foundational work, and it's not our finish line. I mean, yes, it's not all about money, but it is about a lot of decisions that had to do with how we allocate our resources and a lot of foundational work that we had to do first. And it has allowed us to get to this point. And if I expressed gratitude to everyone at NVUSD for their contributions, it would sound like an Oscar speech with the exit music getting louder and louder. So please know that we, everyone on the dais recognizes and appreciates what has been done and what will be done. And I believe that someday upon reflection, so will our, all of our students. So thank you very much, and thank you to you too, Dr. Masetti.
Well said, trustees. I'll just add that I really appreciate the trend that we have now of the context giving, of the embedding the UPP into the data to really represent the full context of the, of each school's growth. And I do think to, you know, to Trustee Waters' point that it's, it's very clear that we are doing a great deal with a lot less resources and with students that have, in some cases, an enormously larger amount of need in comparison to other schools in the county. And so it's just very gratifying to see how strategic and the continuity and the unity of purpose, I think, that Dr. Reddy and Dr. Booth and Dr. Masetti, you know, the instructional division and the, that has been so, such a focus to really lay a groundwork and a foundation of the instructional approach that has clarity, that's doable. I think we heard earlier around the Napa Junction deep-dive visit about, Trustee Martin pointing out, you know, the teachers here have the training they need, they have the supplies and the curriculum they need, they have the support from the organization, from their site leader. And so really, all of these conditions can be sort of invisible factors, one way or the other, in terms of moving the needle. And so I just want to applaud you and your team for laying those conditions of the continuity and the necessary materials, training, know-how, knowledge, you know, our, our data around the Letters training, you know, the percentage of our, of our teachers that are involved in that, the number of teachers that we have on that high-impact instructional team, you know, suiting up and wanting to be involved in this sort of system-wide improvement and change. These are all incredible indicators of the unity of purpose and the strategic commitment and vision that you've held and continue to hold. So congratulations, this is a real celebration for us. I will take a moment to just say, it's now five years ago that we, as a district, passed on the Maya Comas initial charter petition. And there was a lot said about the financial impact reasoning around that vote of the board. But as one of the teachers sitting on the board at that time, you know, there were a lot of other weaknesses in that petition beyond the impact that the passage of that petition would have on, on our finances. And it just, you know, it gives me no real pleasure to see the students at that school, you know, performing at such a low level. And I, you know, I have disappointment that, that those students are being served in ways that are not yielding results that, that they should and that they were promised in that petition. So I appreciate the inclusion of that middle school in our data because it's relevant. And I just want to say that it was really clear five years ago that they were over-promising and that their ability to deliver would be shaky. And now we're seeing that play out in the data. So I just wanted to highlight that point as well. But really, to end on the note about the work that we are doing in our organization, thank you for your ongoing commitment. And again, this is the beginning. This is not our, our finish line, as Trustee Jenkowitz said. And I really look forward to seeing the continued growth that I believe will be rendered from this continued staying the path, staying the course, building the foundation, building the teacher's capacity, and keeping our eyes on the prize. So thank you so much for this presentation, and congratulations. Yes?
Thank you so much, trustees and President Reiser. I just want to let everybody know, I am just so proud of our team, and I really want to thank them for their hard work. You know, moving the needle, like many of the trustees said, is, it's not easy work. It's not simple work. It's very complicated to move an entire system. And Dr. Reddy, I just want to commend you and your team. In your first year as the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Support Services, we have seen gains in ways that we have not seen historically here in NVUSD to scale. And so that really needs to be celebrated and recognized. And I also just really want to take a moment to recognize the high degree of collaboration between Instructional Support Services and Data Services and Assessment. They need each other in this work. And you all, in this first year of working together in these, these roles, have just done an extraordinary job of leveraging a high degree of collaboration in order to move our system forward. And so we're really, really excited. You prompted so much of the system to really inspect the work that they were doing and how we could get better at demonstrating growth on these markers. And it's really clear that our teachers, our staff, our principals, and our students are starting to understand, you know, the rigor of the academic language on these measures and, you know, how you have to teach in order to ensure that students are well-prepared to show mastery of standards and proficiency of the standards of their grade levels and content areas. So it's complicated, it's hard work, and the instructional leadership capacity is high and strong right now. We have more work to do. We want to be above those state averages. We want to get back to pre-pandemic levels, but this is a great first step forward. And I couldn't be more proud as a superintendent. So thank you so much for all of your leadership and efforts.
Should we take a break before?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, it's 9:15, so we're going to take just our brief five-minute break for the board. Okay, we've returned from our brief break, and that brings us to item J2A on our agenda, which is the introduction of supplementary instructional material adoption recommendations for high school. And we have Executive Director Manning here.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Member, Fish Leader. I am here to introduce two curricular resources for your consideration this evening, both again for high school. One is for our CTE, Business and Entrepreneurship Class. It is a supplementary book called I Will Teach You to Be Rich. And the other is a core, is a supplementary text for our AP History course, and it is the AMSCO Advanced Placement Edition of the United States History Text. So these are both supplementary resources that we are proposing and would like to move forward with for those two courses at high school. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Any questions from the dais?
I'm super excited for financial literacy. Like, it's wonderful because I think, and the students that I'm, I deal with, the calculus is one thing, calculus is great, but knowing how the stock market works, knowing how home loans work and stuff like that is a wonderful skill that people can have right out of high school versus having to learn about it from their parents or having to figure it out for themselves, given how complicated the system is. So I'm, I'm super, super excited about that.
Thank you.
I saw the title of the book, I'm like, no. I have to look at this book anyway. I did, I was like, I do, no, I do not care for this title whatsoever. Phenomenal reviews, went through all the content, very, it implies something very different in, in kind of the way that it's presented in the title than the substance in the content of the book, which was incredibly practical, user-friendly, common sense, really applicable to this age kind of financial literacy. It was great, anyway.
Agree. I had those same questions initially and needed to do a deep dive, so thank you. And we're also excited to begin the planning for our financial literacy class at high school this year and launch that in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, thank you so much, Director Manning. All right. So now that brings us to the action item section for our agenda. We are at K1, Business Services, K1A, the purchase of marquee signs for three school sites with choir, choir school signs.
I'll move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. Looking forward to seeing those signs. K1B, request to surplus equipment.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K1C, scoreboard replacement at Napa High School with Nevco.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K2, facility improvement. K2-
K2, Facility Improvement, K2A, lease-leaseback Services Contract with Wright Contracting.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K2B, lease-leaseback Services Agreement with Arns Builders.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K2C, purchase of lunch tables.
Move to approve, second.
A first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K2D, contract with KWC Construction Services, Inc.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K2E, contract with Signet Testing Labs.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K2F, Division of State Architecture Plan Review Fees for Campus Modernization Projects.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K3, Human Resources, K3A, request to hire educator less than fully credentialed.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K3B, agreement with University of Nevada Reno for student teaching.
Move to approve, second.
A first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4, Instructional Services, K4A, new high school course of study adoption.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4B, the 2025-26 School Plan for Student Achievement Addendums.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4C, California Student Data Privacy Agreement with Butte County Office of Education.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4D, Memorandum of Understanding with Napa County.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4E, agreement with Napa Valley Education Foundation for Community Schools Cohorts.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4F, agreement with Napa Valley Education Foundation for the Learning Communities for School Success Program.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4G, agreement with Napa County Health and Human Services Agency Self-Sufficiency Services.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4H, Wayside Publishing Quote with Student Data Privacy Agreement.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4I, Google for Add-on Invoice with Student Data Privacy Agreement.
Move to approve, second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4J, Ratification of Memorandum of Understanding with Calistoga Joint Unified School District.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K4K, Ratification of Agreement with Walsworth and Student Data Privacy Agreement.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K5, Operational Services, K5A, request to purchase forklift.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, any public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain?
Motion passes. K5B, Agreement with Castino.
Move to approve, second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member, Fish Leader?
Aye.